We're back at open session. This is the February 7th, 2019 Town and Sherburne Select Board Meeting. We opened the meeting at 6:00, went into executive session, and now are returned to open session. I would ask the town administrator to read the agenda with any proposed changes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, will I amend or approve the agenda, and then a period of public comment. The executive session was for MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Subsection 2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, police chief, police lieutenant, fire chief, finance director. The board has returned to public session. Consideration of consent agenda with a payroll warrant, and next meeting dates of February 14th, there's a workshop regarding 41 North Main Street, then February 28th, and March 14th, and March 28th. And then 2019 Annual Town Meeting items, consideration of FY '20 omnibus budget and capital items, insurance and employee benefits with Finance Director Sharon McPherson, and then Historical Commission, Council on Aging with Karen Jewell, COA Director. Then consideration of 2019 Annual Town Meeting warrant with David Williams, Town Administrator, Electronic Voting Committee with Mary Wolf and Abby Fisk, citizens petitions, two of them with Michael Lee, and citizens petition sustainability coordinator Fred Cunningham and Alicia Goodie. Routine business, Finance Director report, Town Administrator report, selectmen reports. And then adjourn to executive session again, not to return to open session. MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A 3, to discuss strategy with respect to threaten potential litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the town, and the chair so declares. Library project, the board will not return to public session. Sorry.
Terrific. Are there any proposed amendments?
I would move the call to order in reading the agenda after the executive session. So it's accurate. Other than that, I would move to approve.
So I'll second the motion to approve what the amendment poses by selectmen chairman.
What are we doing?
Terrific. Moving the call to order after the first executive session.
Okay.
So it would be immediately after the summary of the first executive session. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of the amended agenda? Five zip, it is approved. The first agenda item is the consideration of the consent agenda with payroll warrant. Next meeting is scheduled as a workshop regarding the 41 North Main Street with several other town committees on February 14th. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
I'll second it. All in favor? Terrific. And just as a reminder for Mike and the other members of the committee, I will be out of the country on the 28th. Somebody else will need to chair that meeting in March 28th. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the consideration of the FY '20 omnibus budget and capital items. Sharon, you want to present the insurance and employee benefits?
Sure. So in your books, there's a tab for insurance. Diane was able to reach out to Maya, and they gave us a quote of about 5% for our general insurance, so we are budgeting it to be $258,282, which represents a 5% increase.
That's less than it typically has been.
Yeah, it's very good. And I actually included the letter that we received from Maya. And so that's good news there. And the health insurance is also some good news that I'll talk about next.
So Sharon, when you say 5%, is that this email which says budget 7%, but it should be closer to 5%?
Yeah, and we budget 5%. But on the health insurance, I have.
Does anyone know what the region's insurance is coming in at for health insurance?
Oh, for health insurance.
Jeff, any idea?
I don't know for sure. I do have the region.
Okay.
I think they're lower than prior years.
I actually sent them my information, I mean, the Town and Sherburne's information on what our rates are and what the increases are projected at, but I haven't heard back. But I'll reach out to Dawn again. And then if you go to, any questions on this insurance? Okay. So if you move to the employee benefits, so the good news is for our health insurance, we received a quote from Maya, and they said that this year, the range could be anywhere from a decrease of .7% to a maximum increase of 5%. In our budget, we use the 5% to be conservative, but soon as we get the final, we're going to change it. We're not going to come in at 5%. We're definitely going to come in lower. That's what I hope. So that was really good news. The other item to bring to your attention is the middlesex retirement. In the past, we've taken the quick pay discount and paid the whole amount on July 1, and it's had a significant impact on our cash flow. As you recall, last year, things were a little tight. So we have opted to do the, to spread it out over the course of the year. And so our new amount would be $1,036,000. And that represents an increase, I mean, if we were to quick pay it, it would be $18,000 more, paying about 1.8% to do that.
So $18,000 by paying it over versus a lump sum at the beginning? Is that what you mean?
It's $18,000 more if we just smooth it out over the course of the year.
And that's for this, what I'm wondering is, so if we move to the quarterly tax collection that we were talking about before, would that help smooth out the revenue stream and allow us to actually get the $18,000 discount?
That's a very good point. But for right now, because we're not in that situation.
And we wouldn't be for 2020, even if it's voted.
Yeah, and that's a real big hit that time of year. So, I mean, so under the health insurance line, there's definitely, you know, if we were to lower that to 2%, we'd have a savings of $47,000.
Chair, are those the only two options, is smoothing it out or paying it up front?
Yeah, yep.
There's no way to pay it all lump sum after the first tax?
Well, I mean, I could ask that question.
Because the $18,000 is just going to be interest over the course of the year, isn't it?
Yeah, you know what? I can reach out.
If you pay it evenly until November and then do a balloon payment then?
I can do that. Let me reach out, and I can get back to you on that.
Sharon, two questions. One, maybe you mentioned this, but the email from the Maya Health Benefits person said that they were expecting an average of .6%, which is terrific, so.
Very good, yes.
But, so the budget is currently at 5%?
At 5%.
And we'll wait to see what.
Just a placeholder. I mean, originally, we had it at 10, and we got this letter. We have it at 5 now, but we're going to, once we get things solidified, which we should hear pretty soon.
I would think within the next three to four weeks.
Yeah, then we'll go in and adjust it.
You'll hear it before the public hearing?
Definitely, yes.
What's the dollar amount of that spread of 5% to .6%?
Well, it's $78,000 with a 5% increase.
It's $15,800 per percentage point. So right now, I mean, if we were to lower.
$75,000.
Yeah, right.
Savings.
Yeah.
And with the $65,000 delta that you're looking for, that could make up the difference.
It's definitely good news, yeah.
The .6 would be outstanding. The second question, any discussion about increasing the appropriation to the OPEB liability trust as advisory?
Jeff, have you guys talked about?
I think this is going to be too tight this year. We haven't discussed it yet, but it's a very, very tight budget here. There was not much growth, so right now, we have, as George just mentioned, around a $63,000 gap.
Right.
Yeah.
So it's level funded at this point?
We have $350,000 in tax.
We do, yeah.
So, I mean, I think we're better off using tax relief for our focus. It's pretty tight.
Any other questions up here? I know we've got a very full agenda. If not, let's move on. Thank you, Sharon.
You're welcome.
Let's move on to the, it's unbelievable to have good news on the health insurance front.
I know, I'm so excited.
Is that Obamacare or Romney Care? We have to thank for that. Okay, Historical Commission, who's presenting?
Hi, Gene Goldfield.
Why don't you go up to the mic? Thanks.
You can sit over there.
Can I sit there?
Yeah, sure. That way you'll have the mic right in front of you.
Okay.
Gene Goldfield, I'm the treasurer of the Historical Commission. As you know, we have a relatively modest budget of two line items. As you know, we received a grant from the Mass Historic Commission, and that means that we're now responsible for and happy to have in our annual budget $600 to maintain the statue each year, which is the first line item. The second line item has to do with a program for historical signs in the town that we've initiated, and we already have things targeted. We have one completed. If I may give you a handout. In the budget request, we increased the amount that we requested from $500 to $700 for a new historical sign that we're going to do as part of our project. The reason for the $200 increase is that we now know that, on the basis of having produced this historical sign, we know that it costs $700, so we just need a couple hundred dollars more. And so the total of $1,300 is really made up of those two items.
Terrific. Yeah, and Peggy Novak and Susie Wheelwright had already discussed this in an earlier meeting when we were talking about the Dow statute. I'm sorry, didn't bring my wonderful badge.
Yeah.
Any questions up here of the Historical Commission budget?
I think this is fine. Small budget and important function.
I'd like to sign very much.
It's beautiful. It's apparently, it's waiting for the ground to thaw before we see it up at 12:00.
Terrific. Thanks.
If you want to see it in person, it's in Sean Klein's office. Is that the phone point?
Gazuntite, gazuntite. Okay, Council on Aging, Karen?
I know you have a very tight agenda. I do have some prepared remarks, but if in interest of time, you would just prefer to get right to the meat of the matter, I will send these to you electronically. How about that?
That'd be great.
Okay, perfect. So we, our budget does have some slight increases. The most significant one is in terms of our programming. The number of seniors in town is continuing to increase with the baby boomers. We will be up to 24% as of FY '19. We are developing programming for our baby boomer population, our newly retired, our junior seniors, as we like to call them, to engage them. What we have found is the empty nesters don't have a lot of connections to the town. They're not out on the soccer field anymore, and they are not at Farm Pond. So we are going to be starting a new program called Sherburne Connect and developing activities and programs which we hope will be of interest to them. Our lifetime learning is also very significant in terms of drawing in the senior population. We have 97 seniors enrolled, just Sherburne seniors, and we draw from other communities from as far away as Southborough and Newton and all the way down to closer towns like One of our most successful programs, which deals with social isolation, has been our men's group. This continues to draw between 25 and 26 men once a month to the heritage in Sherburne. And that was started with seed money from the Metro West Health Foundation. That money, however, will be running out by FY '20, and so part of that money will be used to continue to supplement that. Just to kind of wrap up where we are, the total programming costs for the Council on Aging is just shy of $75,000. Of that, only 37.5% came from the municipal budget, 35.5% came from participant fees and donations, and the other 27% came from grants. So I hope the seniors and COA can count on your support.
Terrific questions up here. I had the pleasure of going for the first time to the seniors' luncheon, which I guess the predecessor group was the SOBs?
Yes, the SOBs, exactly.
I wasn't quite sure what that stood for, but.
Sherburne All Boys.
There you go.
Just to make it clear for the record.
There you go. It was an amazing turnout. It was really, I was there just to provide information, but I really enjoyed it. So it was a wonderful gathering. Any questions up here about the budget?
No, have you gone through advisory?
I go through advisory next week.
Okay, all right. And is this, on the salary page, it's a 4.09% increase. Is that based on the increase in the number of days, or is some of that just an increase above the 2%?
It was an increase in hours, which went through personnel last year. And part of that is, the total cost is for coming out of lifetime learning. So 40 hours a week are coming from the municipal budget, and the rest will be coming from the Lifetime Learning Revolving Fund.
Okay. And that's the difference between the 13 hours and the 15 hours?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And the $5,000 was an addition of a new line for the outreach? Is that?
That's correct.
That's the increase in the expenses? Is all in that one line?
So my comment is to thank you and the Council on Aging for all that you do for our seniors. Get a lot of positive impact, a lot of positive feedback that you make an impact. And I think that's what a good community does and what a good group of volunteers like you all have done. Congratulations on what you've done, and please continue to do it.
I have an outstanding team and an outstanding board and a great group of volunteers, so I'm very, very grateful.
As we see more EOA, more over-55 housing going in and proposed, you're actually going to see more and more importance and reliance. And I think even a kind of self-starting, independent kind of social community there as well. I think it's nice to see that.
Carol?
I have a question.
Could you identify yourself, please? Sorry.
Sorry, Carol Marple, Western Avenue. I have a question that's more generic rather than for the Council on Aging budget. But I'm curious why the board's selectmen just not vote or give approval to their budget makers when they come before you, so that budget makers can go to advisory and say, here's my budget, the board of selectmen, my appointee without your approval.
Because I, Carol, we've talked about this, and I asked that we don't approve any of the budgets until we've seen them all, because I don't want to vote in a vacuum on an individual budget.
Okay, but don't you see all the budgets when they come in and register?
Well, we're not going to vote on somebody until we've had a chance for them to come and explain to us, so we're going to do exactly what advisory does, is to see all the budgets and then vote on them. Because it's not fair to vote on a budget for somebody when you haven't seen all the budgets. It's too many times we sit in silos in this town, and I think by looking at it as a whole, you get a better view of the budgets. So we come in, we have conversations, and after we've seen all the budgets, then we'll go through and vote on them.
And your budget makers are going to advisory without your support?
Yes.
That's not a good thing.
Why, Carol? You don't, I mean, we can, changes keep being made. When we're sitting up here, when we're looking at budgets, when I sat on advisory and we looked at budgets, budgets are constantly changing. So say, they went to advisory and they got cut back, then they have to come back and ask for approval from us again. It's not, that's not a good way to do things. So we've decided that we want to look at all the budgets, and then we'll look at approving them.
There are a lot of moving parts. I mean, the health budget, that's a $75,000 swing. We don't know what it is, so until the numbers are finalized, we may be tighter or less.
So, Mr. Chair, can I ask, I don't think this is on the agenda to justify how we handle the budgets. I would suggest if we're going to put it on an agenda, we do it in the future, and we move on and finish the items that we're talking about.
Sounds good. Let's move on to the town meeting warrant. The first is the Electronic Voting Committee, Mary Wolf and Abby Fisk. David, did you want to set this up any other way? Are we ready to move on right to the warrant?
No, they have all the information on, it's a moderator-appointed committee.
Is this going to be a show? Okay, good.
I'm moving over here.
Payroll warrants.
I'm Abby Fisk, and I am chair of the Electronic Voting Committee. The three of us make up the committee with two.
Sorry?
With two ex officio members, our town clerk and town moderator. And we have a report to give for you tonight. Eve will do our intro, and Wassim will do a slideshow for you, and then we're happy to take any questions. And you should have a copy of the report in front of you.
Hi, I'm Eve Scott Ludwig, and we've been meeting as a committee as of, we were formed out of a town meeting on Article 24, starting in June. The three of us, with Mary and Carol, started to really discuss what we thought the requirements were for electronic voting to be used in town meetings, as well as looking at the available technology, as well as surveying a lot of towns in the Commonwealth that are doing open town meeting using electronic voting. And, let me move those up. And really, the motivation was that we really wanted to have, guarantee the accuracy and integrity of every vote on town meeting, and really address speed using a clicker versus a paper ballot or a voice vote can actually speed the actual results coming back. And then we also wanted to ensure the privacy of everyone being able to vote without any kind of external pressure. So, Mike, can you go? So, really what we felt, the summary of the requirements were that the number of voters in general, we think on average, based on data that Carol provided to us about the last few years of town meetings, that on average, there's about 300 participants with a maximum of 500. And we really felt that there had to be an easy-to-use solution, one to set up and run, as well as for the voter to be using, that the actual handset had to be easy to use, and that we needed to have available technical support provided by any vendor we used. We wanted a user-friendly interface, again, both from the clicker that was used, as well as from whoever was driving the presentation interfacing with the technical solution. Obviously, we wanted to ensure that anonymity of the vote was preserved, and then security and location and accessibility. Accessibility, again, from a sense of if someone was blind or any other affinity, that they could also participate in the vote.
So we went through a process of first investigating what electronic voting options exist out there, and also looked at what other towns are using, and what other towns have looked at electronic voting. We eliminated a number of systems that we felt did not meet our basic requirements. So for example, there are many systems out there based on just cellphone. You bring your own device, and we felt that's not necessarily going to be very useful to the entirety of the population. So we focused on two main vendors, option technologies and turning technologies, and we invited both vendors to present their electronic voting solutions. And after the presentations, we also probed further with those two vendors on things like options for a free pilot, different pricing options, investigated different pricing options with them, how flexible their offerings were. So for example, if you were to rent X number of handsets, but then we expected a town meeting with a larger number of participants, how flexible they are with the pricing and their engagements and arrangements. We explored the possibility of renting from other municipalities, questions around system deployment, usage, maintenance, and also integration with our existing town meeting procedures, so like the check-in, the existing procedures of town meeting, the checkout process, and how these systems might integrate or not. And we have in the report a side-by-side comparison of the two vendor solutions, and here's a summary of that. So for example, technical support is available with both options. One of the vendors, they're really only focused on one engagement model, which is they come in and they hand-hold the process from end to end. The different clickers are very user-friendly. You get a feedback when you vote, you see it on an LCD, and there's a little LED light as well. The display with one of the vendors, Turning Technologies, which by the way, so Turning Technologies, the vendor on the left, that's actually the vendor that we have, we're favoring, the committee is favoring. And you'll see there's many reasons for that. One of the reasons, the primary reasons, the display is, it's very transparent to everyone in the town meeting. You can actually see the results displayed on the same screen that where you have your articles being presented. So it's very transparent, very engaging to the community. The pricing is also favorable with that option. These are preliminary, unnegotiated pricing, and that include a support person on site as well. Anonymity, both options are, they preserve the anonymity of the voters, so when you are handed a handset, there's no, there's no, nothing that ties a particular voter to that particular handset. So there's, so no one knows how voter X actually did vote. And security, they're all have good, solid security. The physical arrangement, what that means is being able to support a multi-room arrangement or auditorium where, let's say, we don't have good signal, cellphone signal or anything like that, so we did not want to have any dependence on the physical location where the town meeting is being held. And the integration with existing town meeting procedures, you know, one of the vendors, we felt, again, the Turning Technologies, you know, and you'll see all the details in the report, definitely felt that integrates a lot better. It's based on integration with PowerPoint. So you can actually have, when voters actually make their votes, the result can immediately be displayed in the PowerPoint presentation that you're actually presenting to the town. So it's very nicely integrates with how we already hold our town meetings and conduct town meetings. The check-in and checkout processes are, do not materially change, actually do not change, other than handing out the handsets when the citizens walk in and collecting the handsets when they walk out. We also looked at two other areas. Would using electronic voting requirement and bylaws? And the summary of this is essentially no, at least that's the recommendation from town council. Would electronic voting alter accessibility? We found. This is from the town of Avon, where they used this particular system, and here's actually the presentation, a couple of slides of the presentation that they showed in the town meeting. So, they explained that, here's the handset, you have, you press the button 1A for yes, 2B for no, and that's pretty much it. And when you press the 1A, you see that on the picture to the left, you get, the display, the LCD display, will show 1A, and you'll get a green light. 2B in the middle, the LCD display will show that, the green light. On the right side, if you select something incorrect, or you're voting outside of the window of vote, you get a, essentially, a zero and no light. So, your vote was not recorded. And these are some examples that they actually showed in the town meeting, the town of Avon. So, they have just a question to get the citizens to get used to the system. Will Yo-Yo work in space? Then, a clock down will be displayed on the screen. So, for example, 15 seconds will give the voters the time to select their answer, and then the answer will appear immediately in real time after the expiration of the countdown. And so, everyone, all citizens can see the outcome of the vote. Another example from the town of Westwood, same thing, where they integrate now, this is, this is the actual meeting, where they have the articles displayed, and then the voting on the article. So, you see the voting, it lists there, this article requires a majority vote, it could be a two-thirds, so everyone can see that. And then voting takes place, a countdown clock appears, and then the voting results appears. In this particular case, you're not seeing any voting results, this is not backed by any real data. So, that's, that's pretty much it, I think.
When you talked about the costs, what, that, the annual cost of this, is that renting it, is that buying it, what, how does that work?
That is a rental. This is a rental for use in one town meeting.
Okay.
So, the rental, this is all preliminary pricing, but it's based on the number of handsets, and also, it increases based on whether or not we want technical support present during the meeting. That's, I think, about what...
I mean, I think this is great, great work on this. I mean, the amount of time I think this would save during town meeting would be exponential. I know some people that have come, he's, one of my friends actually said, he'd been to a town meeting a couple of times, and he said, "I can't sit through it with the way they count these votes, it's, there's got to be a better way." And I think it turns off some people that are very tech savvy when they come to the way that we do town meeting, and they just, they don't have the patience for it.
Yeah, we do think it will encourage more people to participate.
Eric, what's the maximum number we've had at a town meeting? Will the 500 cover the maximum turnout so far?
No more than 500. We've covered close, 500, 485 in that range, but that's unusual.
I thought Coolidge Crossing was...
How big was that?
That's special, that's special, it's 1,000, wasn't it?
No.
No, 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 no.
It was about 485.
I think that was the, that STM.
How many people are you going to get if you can vote faster because you have these gadgets? I mean, if 20% of the people are staying away because they can't sit through it, like George's friend, you may, you may end up increasing town meeting attendance.
And, in which case, we would, we've only done this once since I've been in town for a week, we set up the cafeteria as a second room.
Right.
So, that will require more handsets, more base stations, so that would...
That was tough, logistically.
Yeah, the good news would be the increased participation, the bad news would be the increased cost.
But we should say that, with the Turing technologies, you know, they're very flexible, you can actually add another base station, which is a very minimal cost, like a $100 or something like that. And then additional clickers are like, and again, this is not negotiated pricing, just their, you know, price sheet. And it was like $4 a clicker for additional clickers.
Can I add to this, that I've actually used these?
Yep.
I've been in meetings on, there's a compact between the 50 states, and we have these little things on our hands, and it's so easy, so cool, so effective, you can see it. But in my case, it would say Commonwealth of Massachusetts, bingo, votes yes or no. You can, so it must be the technology to actually trace it back to the voter, because that's...
They actually configure the system to be either representative or open.
Right.
It's showing open.
If you had a representative vote, they're going to limit it.
For a representative town, it would show that way, but our software will not be...
Because it's open.
I've seen it done at a representative vote, and ABC have a number to that thing, and they assign it to a person. No one's keeping track. So, if you assign it to a digit, no one knows who actually got that unit number. You know, there's a unit number to each one, it goes to Haldrensis, it's assigned to you, then your name. You don't have to do that.
Mike?
I was going to say, this is a fantastic report. I mean, they've, you appointed the right committee, this is, this reflects a really great understanding of the issue, and you explained it to me in a really clear way, and I appreciate that, and I, you know, I completely buy into the conclusions in the presentation, it just makes a lot of sense.
I had one additional question. You had an appendix with 11 towns using Turning Point. How many towns in your survey were using option technologies, based on the pricing? I would guess that it's a lot fewer, but...
It was fewer, I don't actually think it was that many fewer, though, but...
But some are changing, too.
Yeah, some are...
Some are changed from option technologies to Turing.
Right, that's an important point.
And others are discussing switching, but not...
So, option technologies have been around longer in government voting. Turning Point has been in academia...
My husband's a professor at Boston University, and absolutely, both my kids went there, too, and almost every student walks in and buys this, that clicker, because that's the whole, most universities, that's their target market in Turing technology, is actually universities. So, they're used to doing, you know, huge classes, you know, very lectures all the time, day in, day out. So, this system really has been debunked for at least its base use case, and I think they, this is sort of a specialized use case, so I think they've had a bigger use deployment of the technology than I think OTI has, because OTI is hyper-focused on government.
Any questions up here before we go to Carol?
Well, I was just going to say that if this, if we both can use this and spend the money, and we do enormously increase town meeting participation, the amount of money that it would cost to add this for the second room would be negligible to the cost of setting up the second room for the media, you know, the sound and picture. We paid 1,500 just to do that at Pine Hill for that last session. So, that's a much bigger cost than this would be.
Michael?
Oh, I still suggest, if you're trying to see like a maximum number, the year that Dover was considering the rail trailers I was presenting about, and that was a lot of folks in a two-room situation.
Yeah. But that's great that you have the flexibility to add, and it sounds like a marginal cost increase, so.
First, may I make a motion to include this on the warrant?
Sure.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Nice job. Really nice paper, too, on this presentation.
So, George, from including it on the warrant, are we going to vote on accepting the report?
I think we usually do that at accepting the report.
So, in other words, what do we include?
We vote to support the warrant article, because there's a warrant article...
Which asks for the funding for this.
Yes. Article...
It's Article 11.
Article 1 is the report, that's what I'm wondering, what we're putting on the warrant?
We're putting Article 11.
We're putting Article 11.
Article 11.
We're putting 11 on the warrant.
That's, that was my question. It's to include the article...
To raise an appropriate sum or...
Yes. Article 11.
That's, that's what I was...
Okay.
We have to amend.
Right.
Right, right, right. I think there's other articles as well, Mary, this year, that, there's other articles this year that could also impact the omnibus.
The next, next two warrants are citizen petitions from Michael Lee, and they are, what numbers are they here?
So, I had a point of order on this one, Chuck, which was, if these petitions are signed by the requisite number of citizens, they go on the warrant automatically. So, we would typically have this hearing, or whatever you want to call it, in order to find out if we were putting something on the warrant. What is the objective of this hearing in this context?
Yeah, I don't, the, my understanding, in the past, we had a citizen petition that didn't have language. This has very specific language, which I believe incorporates, it was reviewed by Town Council?
No, he's giving you an opinion that you'll have soon.
Yeah, I, this could be...
Can I make a motion, can I cut this short, to put both Michael Lee's articles on the warrant?
Is there a second?
I don't think we have to vote for that, that's, they're on the warrant.
They're on the warrant.
I think I earned that right. Virtually state law. I'm just, I'm just making the point that if we're not voting budgets, and we're not voting warrant articles now...
So, I am here tonight...
He's presenting to us, and then, once we, I mean...
That's what I'm wondering, is this, this is the one opportunity we have to hear before the public hearing?
Yeah.
I'd be happy to take questions, explain mechanics, get back to you guys if I can't answer it, you know, right away. It wasn't provided with any guidance as to a presentation, and I assume you did not want a 20-page PowerPoint deck.
We do not want a 20-page PowerPoint.
Correct.
So, you know, the origins of these predate, you know, any recent activities in town. I was thinking about this back in fall, one, specific to bringing more transparency to the capital budgeting voting process, including when there's overrides at a town ballot. And then the second is to address, I think, some pressing concerns around the state of the Town's Pension Fund, and ensuring that its financial condition doesn't degrade.
Yeah, I only had, in Article 27, the debt exclusion from Prop 2 and 1/2. The immediate question I had was the rationale for the $50,000 threshold versus something higher or something lower? Any thoughts?
Just kind of my, based upon my experience of reviewing numerous items, in my previous role as on the Regional School Committee, you know, you don't want to be going through votes for a $10,000 tractor, but other times, you know, I was not comfortable, in the most recent past, with a single up or down vote for the entire bucket of stuff that the region was presenting. So, I think that's kind of, you know, informing my position. I've also seen in other towns, when they'll do a large building project, particularly with schools, technology often will get bundled into a construction project, and I just feel like we're better off building something or renovating something, and then having a separate, discreet opportunity to review, you know, continued investments in technology, either for educational or other, other purposes.
I was just wondering if, particularly with some of the police cruisers, which are pretty routine, or just the question of timing, whether the $100,000 threshold made more sense, but that's just, I think there's rationales in either direction.
Yeah, it's, again, it's not an exact science, and something that, again, if it had the support of the town, but later on, we realized that 50,000 wasn't the right amount, then amended it at, you know, future town meeting would be, be my recommendation after trying out this process.
My question about the discretion of when you do split up. So, let's say you're putting a $200,000 request, it's for six separate things, but they kind of rely on each other. Who decides about, you know, you can't purchase B without A, and who decides how to separate kind of A and B? Would that be advisory, do you know what I mean? So, it might be circumstances where you just need to purchase two things, or you purchase neither of them, you know? And I guess I can't think of a specific...
Well, I guess to me that that would be a discreet, single purchase, that's not, if A doesn't work without B, then you're buying A and B, and that's a logical, logical warrant article or vote.
I also had a question about the pension liability. I don't know if I'm asking a lot of questions about the first one.
Yeah, I had one more question about the posting at the town polling place, the financial disclosure for each article. Is the thought to have one that's available at the polling booth, or at each booth, each separate? It wasn't clear to me from the language.
Oh, Carol is still here. I envisioned you would have your public notice, but then you would have a printed sheet available for somebody to take at the time they're being handed their ballot.
Right, okay.
Does financial disclosure is defined in here? What constitutes a financial disclosure? Is it just...
Yeah, I, I thought I was pretty...
Well, that's what I'm saying, is it, is it just what's in here? Is it, is it, I don't see the, I don't see the defined term, that's what I'm wondering.
Well, the, no, in Section 3, when you're pursuing a debt exclusion, you know, the Chapter 59, blah, 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 that at the time of the town meeting vote, you would need to have what the maximum manual expenditure and debt service would be to pay for that item, and it defines how to decide the, you know, the finance rate to use. You would calculate the mill rate impact through a very specific set of directions, and then what the average impact, what the tax impact would be for the average valued home in town.
That's a good suggestion.
And that, that type of information then would be consolidated, if there were many items on the budget, so that people could see what the total cost of the, of the portfolio was, and then that similar information should be made available to voters. Right now, when you go to the voting booth, you're just said, told, you know, do you want to exclude from, you know, from Prop 2 and 1/2 limits, the fire truck? And you don't know if it's a $100,000 fire truck or a million dollar, and what that really means to, you know, the average person's, you know, financial situation.
Mike makes a good suggestion, though, if that's going to be the definition for financial disclosure, you might want to make that a defined term, capital FD in Section 3 that way when it's referenced in Section 6.
I would have loved to have had some legal advice.
Yeah.
But all I had was the firm of Brady and Pepper, which are my two dogs.
I suspect that Town Council may want to do that. And also to distinguish what the summary financial schedule in Section 5 is, is clearly different than the financial disclosure, but David, I ask you to raise those questions for Town Council, I think it would...
Well, my, my understanding is I'm limited in that what needs to be presented at town meeting is this. Alternatively, if I got a final review of the language from council, I'd be willing to go out and get 10 of my, you know, supporters to re-sign that if you would accept it.
You don't need to do that.
And edit it.
You can do a motion at town meeting that does have some differences. Doesn't have to be exact word for word.
That's true, well...
Carol?
I, Carol gave me an opinion to the contrary, so...
I wanted to say that Section 6, where it says, "A copy of this financial disclosure shall be made available to each registered voter when they're provided with an official ballot that's not legal." We cannot actively hand out anything inside the polling place. Most we can do is make available right outside the polls, just as I do with the information on ballot questions. I can't hand out, can't actively give a voter a dollar figure that was voted at a town meeting. I can make it available outside the polling place, but voters have to take the step to actually pick it up themselves.
David, why don't we add that to the list of questions for Town Council?
Town Council might want to just reword that a little bit.
Right, right.
I have a couple of comments. I just, just, from when I was on advisory, I know a lot of things change right up until town meeting. I feel like this is setting it up... I wanted to say that Section 6, where it says a copy of this financial disclosure shall be made available to each registered voter when they're provided with an official ballot that's not legal. We cannot actively hand out anything inside the polling place. Most we can do is make available right outside the polls, just as I do with the information on ballot questions. I can't hand out, can't actively give a voter a dollar figure that was voted at town meeting. I can make it available outside the polling place, but voters have to take the step to actually pick it up themselves.
David, why don't we add that to the list of questions for town council?
Town council might want to just reword that a little bit.
Right, right.
I have a couple of comments. I just, from when I was on advisory, I know a lot of things change right up until town meeting. I feel like this is setting it up for... This really puts very little flexibility. This makes it make things less flexible for, and a lot more, I think, more work for advisory. When they're developing their report, which is a month or so before town meeting, if anything changes and it's not in the report, I mean, I just, I've got to understand it more. I think we really need to have a discussion with town council on how this really, really affects a lot of moving parts when it comes to the advisory report, when it comes to... We don't want to be breaking any of these statutes when we make a change on town meeting floor. I think this really needs to be dug into by town council and reviewed to make sure we're not... I appreciate the idea of it, but I just, I worry a little bit about...
You print a dollar amount in that book.
Right. But I also, I also think sometimes you need some flexibility on some of these items for changes that come up. So I want to make sure that that's, this isn't limiting that.
Yeah, I don't envision that this would limit... I mean, if you printed in the book that an item is going to be 800,000. And then for some reason, in the subsequent weeks, it changes to 700 or 900, then...
Sometimes we change up until town meeting, whether we're borrowing money for something or using free cash or it's that, that's a fluid situation. I mean, Jeff could probably comment even more.
Again, from a voter perspective and as a long-term resident, that's fine. You should have that flexibility, but that should not be at the harm of somebody understanding a motion. And I think our most recent past has shown that the more complex something gets, the better we're at being very careful at disclosing what we're asking people to underwrite financially.
I mean, I do think this is important to discuss and have on the warrant, but those are my concerns is...
Again, I had engaged David to have this, you know, reviewed by a council because I knew that there were some moving parts in here. And again, I'm still open to that. I want it to be a successful article for the town and I don't want to get into a drafting debate at town meeting. That's not in anyone's interest, as we've seen in other situations. You want clean language that people understand either will accomplish goal X or is not a goal that you feel should be accomplished through a bylaw and keep it at that level of, you know, discussion at town meeting.
Terrific. Any other questions up here?
Yeah, I mean, I would say I think a lot of this is probably best practices in terms of providing information and it's pretty thoughtful. I appreciate what George says. I also feel like under Section 2, that's not a, that's not an informational requirement. That's actually a requirement on how things should be voted and it does intrude into what's been the purview of the selectmen to construct a warrant or a capital vote in a particular way and for policy reasons to construct it in a certain way. So from that standpoint, I think, you know, I could be convinced maybe, but my initial reaction is I don't really like the directive piece of that.
Well, the intent is that your discretion is limited.
Right, understood. Well, that's your intent.
Whether it's for a selectman or a regional school committee or whoever, if we're being asked to consider something in large dollar chunks, they should be apples and apples in one bucket and dogs in another bucket, not a combination of apple, dogs, cats, and spaghetti.
All right, but your classification is maybe different from my classification and there may be policy reasons why you want to combine some things one way and some things another way. I just feel like that's taking away discretion that should be left with the committee or the board that is asking for the money to be appropriated. And town meeting can vote whichever way they want to if they disagree with it. And certainly people have raised that in the past and votes have failed or votes have gone through.
Terrific. Jeff? Who are you?
I'm Jeff Waldron.
And where do you live?
I live in Beards.
Thank you. In town hall.
Probably come to advisory in a week or two. I forget the schedule, but, you know, I don't even know who calculates some of these numbers. Advisory's not capable of calculating what the tax rate effect will be. We can't calculate the bond rating because we don't know until Heidi goes to market. Sometimes we use short-term bank notes. I just think there's way too much complexity in here and I haven't studied it yet, but I agree with you.
I don't think so.
Section 3 says it's the treasurer's responsibility to put together an estimate of how this is going to be financed. I mean, usually when we go to a debt exclusion, these are 10, 20-year items. They would have a standard way that it would eventually be bundled into a long-term bond and it says you use the prevailing long-term municipal bond interest rate at that time. Is it the final number, you know, that it would end up being at the end? No, but it does specify a process that's straightforward about what numbers go into the formula. And if the treasurer cannot know what the total portfolio of items are that are being financed and is not providing that information to advisory, I'd be a little bit concerned about how we are making those recommendations about either incurring long-term debt at increased tax rate to our voters or we're choosing to use free cash. Or we always have the option to purchase a capital item, bond it however we want and absorb that debt service within the budget. And this is completely exclusive of those situations. It's only when we are asking the residents to share a warrant to increase their tax rate above and beyond Prop 2 and 1/2 limits.
That's not what Section 2 says. That doesn't, that's not limited on Section 2.
Correct, no. Section 2 says when we are going to have a capital discussion, it should be all-rounded discrete item that makes sense for one department.
So that's not, that doesn't get into the indebtedness then?
Correct.
Okay. So the title of this is a little misleading in that respect?
Is that...
I don't mean... Misleading is a characterization, but it's not accurately described.
It says transparency in excluding debt from Prop 2 and 1/2 limits and bundling of capital projects.
I'm looking at financial disclosure requirements when increasing towns indebtedness. Chapter 20.
The Chapter 31 title?
Twenty, twenty. XX, is it?
I'm looking at the correct.
Financial transparency when increasing the town's indebtedness.
I'm looking at the chapter.
Oh, yeah. It is Chapter, right.
I'd be happy to amend little things like that in any way we want. That's not...
Great. Terrific. Michael, thank you very much.
What about the second one, Article 28?
I'm sorry, I thought we were...
Pension liability.
Yep. Eric, you said you had a question about that?
Yeah, the cap that's proposed here, the whatever, tell me, it's $736,551. Is that currently where we're at?
That is the number in the most recent audited financial statements.
So I get the fact that this would trigger in if, let's say, you hire another employee or something like that.
I'm sorry, what?
If you hired another employee, something would trigger this?
No.
Oh, okay.
No. When every, every year now, the auditors obtain from the Middlesex County Pension Fund a revised estimate of the assets, the liabilities, and then the net funded status of a plan. And you're required to then put on to your financial statements that change in funded status, whether it gets better and the debt liability goes down or it gets worse and the liability goes up. The actual way to derive that number is a complex mix of what your rate of return assumptions are on the asset plan, investment performance, and changes in number of employees, retired status, salaries.
Do other municipalities have anything like this?
Pardon?
Do other municipalities have anything like this?
I'm not aware of other municipalities handling the situation in this way. There are many municipalities in the state that have funded status of 70, 80, 90%.
I'm not talking about, yeah, no, I'm not talking about how much they've funded. Is there anybody else who's nailed their feet to the floor in this way? Any other municipality?
Well, this doesn't nail our feet to the floor. It says we will address any deterioration of the pension plan over a four-year period of time. However, it's not, not a good practice to always nail your feet to the floor for every particular situation. And it provides a step, Section 11, you can do, propose a warrant article to skip, you know, an amortization payment. And it provides a process to do that. But effectively, we've allowed the pension to go from a million dollars unfunded status in 1993 to 10.7 million today and not a single vote, not a single participation, either at a board level or at town meeting level, has in a sense affirmed that increase in debt. And this takes a different approach. It says we will not let it get worse than 10.7 million, but if we need to for whatever reason, we're going to have a conscious vote of the town to do so, like we did if we were to borrow a million dollars for a fire truck.
But we should do that then for the trees that we're not cutting down or for the roads that we're not paving or for anything else that we don't want to spend money on in a given year. I mean, we've approved it every year, Michael, because we've approved a budget every year. That's what we've done. Every single year, we've approved a budget. For the past five years, we've approved it consciously, knowing that there was an underfunded pension liability, because every year we discuss it at town meeting. So I don't think that...
We've never discussed the pension liability at town meeting.
Well, we certainly discussed it at the advisory hearing. Whether it makes the floor at town meeting or not, I don't know. I'm sure it has at least once.
I'm not even aware of the... OPEB, which is a completely different liability pool, which is the health care benefits.
That one explicitly makes town meeting.
That gets a lot of attention.
We've had discussions here of the pension liability.
We've had one presentation, I think, in the recent past with the Middlesex County. The, this, since 1988, the state has had all towns and the state itself under a mandate to bring these to funded status. And in 24 years of reporting for this data, we have supposedly been pursuing funded status and we've gone from 53% funded in 1993 to 52% funded. What I'm bringing to the attention is whatever our advisors and experts through Middlesex County have been telling us what we should be putting away, it's not been adequate.
I just can't believe we're doing it worse than every single other town if nobody else needs one of these. I don't know. I'm not buying this, but...
There is, let's see, Town of Belmont is 55% funded. Town of Concord is 85% funded. Wellesley's at 73% when they were at 100 and they got slammed in the markets. They upped their amounts that they were putting in. Lexington's at 85. Framingham's at 68. Hingham's at 68. Worcester's at 65. Winchester's at 79. The vast majority of towns that I did research on are doing better than we are doing through our participation with the Middlesex County. And this problem, it will come to bite us someday. And when we choose not to meet our needs or our mandated benefits to our employees, we put our town employees at risk at some point in the future.
Yeah, I think Mike's question was a different one though. It was a question of are there any other towns that have adopted a bylaw to address the issue in this fashion?
I mean, Wellesley was 100% funded. They took a hit in the last financial crisis and then they turned around and they put together a very aggressive funding strategy, which took them from a $0 contribution in 2008 to 7 million in 2014. So they consciously said, we're going to write a check and they ramped it up so that they could get their funding status back up to where they were, which is 100% is a C grade. It's not an A grade. It's, you've met your obligation.
I don't, I'm with Mike on this. I don't think you need to, again, I'm going to say the same thing I said on the last one. When you're going through the budget process, you need flexibility. If you want the pension liabilities funded in the budget process, you should be talking to advisory about it and see, like, they've been funding a little bit for OPEBs. I mean, it's a hard process of where do you cut the money to pay for this? It's more of a budget discussion.
I think we should cut it out of trees and...
I guess in roads, actually.
We should cut it out of the paving budget and the tree budget.
Is that a motion?
Well, you know, again, there are a variety of places we do that. When we choose to take on, when we choose to do a capital item, why is it a 2/3 vote for a capital item? Because I think the, our historical laws have said, these are significant decisions and we want a consensus on the part of the town that we should spend a million or 5 million or 40 million for a school building.
Mike, quick question.
In this situation, I'm going, we've made this commitment, state mandated commitment to our employees, why are we putting this off to 10 years from now to some other set of taxpayers? Basically running a non-balanced budget.
My quick question, as we mentioned at the beginning, as a citizen petition, this will be on the warrant, so this is really just out of my curiosity. Have you had a discussion with advisory about this warrant article or the previous one?
No, no specific conversations with them. I've raised my concern about pensions and unfunded liability in the past to various members of advisory in an informal status, as have other of my peers in town.
Don't get me wrong, this, for what it is and to accomplish your goal, I think it's great work and I admire you for bringing it forward. I just disagree with it. That's just, you know, not with the concept, just with the mechanism.
Without additional revenue, I don't know how we're going to fund these things.
We have to fund these things.
Well, we have to fund the schools and we have to fund some...
We have to fund the roads and we have to fund the trees.
Right, exactly.
We have to fund this year's employees.
Are we going to take it out of the regional school budget? I don't think that people are going to support.
Or if we had no current employees, we could pay for the pensions on all of the past employees. I mean...
My final comment, it will come out of somebody's budget at some point in time. The question is, are we going to make the mature decision today around what that policy choice is? Or are we going to kick the can down the road another five or 10 or 20 years to another future set of employees, not employees, residents and put other students at risk for their education?
Terrific. Okay, last comment because I want to move on. Jeff?
I don't think so. You think it's terrific to put people at risk, is that what you're saying?
I'll talk to Jay about it. We usually do the budget first. It's the liability that looks at all the warrant articles that are non-accomplished.
Terrific. The next warrant article is another citizen's petition for sustainability coordinator.
We had these folks in one time before. Are they going to...
We already talked to them.
Yeah, we talked to them and it's a citizen's petition, so it requires an motion.
Right, so we mentioned it to advisory last night and they're going to, I guess, hold some sort of money in case the article passes, so we don't have to build it into our select board budget upfront.
Terrific. Okay, let's go on to routine business. Finance director, do, Sharon, do you have a report?
Nope.
David?
Nope.
Up here, any selectmen reports? Okay, I need the language to enter into executive session.
I do one selectmen. Mr. Chick, can I ask just one selectmen question? And I think Sean, you might be able to answer this, but my report would be I see a lot of cut trees around the edges of our roads in town and that's not something that you've been responsible for. But we did have the power company come through and take a lot of trees down and I'm just concerned when those tree trunks are not moved away from the right of way. And you and I have had a dialogue about that, but is there any progress on that?
There has been progress. Couple of things that you'll see. One, that typically, it's nearly impossible to get every log of the day to cut. Three crews there all day. By the end of the day, they've got the tree down. They've been instructed to make sure it's off, you know. There is times where they haven't been in the safest place and we've gone on them. There's also, Sherwin being Sherwin, there's a lot of residents that are asking the trees that, you know, they'll take the wood. So we made sure that they understand that that wood is not staying in the right of way. In the past, that's happened and a couple of years later, we go by and there's still a log next to the road. We've got to go get it. Some of that, if you, you know, I can think of a couple where people have asked why are those logs still on the field? It's because they were, people asking them to stay and get their logs.
The ones that particularly concern me were on South Main Street, which were not too far off the right of way. Those are gone now, right?
Those were taken care of. I know that, yeah.
Okay. And then there are ones on some of our tighter roads. There are some still on the edges of the roads, but not, none as bad as those ones on South Main Street that I've seen.
And that was a good example. Residents asked for them and I hadn't seen them when you mentioned it and I almost drove into them and I called to get them out of there. They said, well, the resident wants them, so we can't leave them six inches from the road.
The bulk of the work has been by Stanley Tree for Eversource, is that correct?
Correct, on behalf of Eversource. They are still here, you know, bouncing between us and Austin and Millis. There's other areas of town where they're going to start seeing blue dogs.
Thanks, thank you.
Someone knows a blue dog means it's been approved and that indicates that Eversource had painted that for Stanley Tree to take.
Thank you for that update, thanks.
Terrific. Terrific. Pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, we're going to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to threatened potential litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the town, and the, and the chair so declares, which I do, this is for the library project. The board will not return to public session. I need a second and a roll call vote. The motion is seconded by Mr.?